Let me call this meeting to order for the town, uh, town of Kensington Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 30th. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
All right, uh, we have a moment of silence. Is there anyone we should keep in our thoughts and prayers? I would like to add the students, the seniors graduating from Walter Johnson tomorrow.
Yeah.
Especially Stella, but for all the seniors, it's great. Yep, we can just powerhead for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. All righty, um, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Counsel, you all received the minutes from Susan. I did not see any edits. So if we can have a motion to approve the May 7th, uh, minutes.
I'll move to approve the May 7th, uh, town council meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, the closed session meeting minutes, um, I didn't see any edits for that either. Uh, if I could get a motion to approve.
I moved to approve the closed session meeting minutes from May 7th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, and the work session, uh, meeting minutes on May 13th. I did not see any, uh, edits for that either. So if I can get a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the work session meeting minutes from May 13th.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, let's move down. Um, so we are, uh, going to, uh, we had the town election, uh, last night for the referendum question. So it is, uh, now up on our website, um, that the, uh, we're just acknowledging that the board of supervisors has prepared the documentations for both the referendum question as well as declaring the two candidates, Connor Crimmens and Stuart Sparker. Uh, Stuart's joining us, uh, tonight on Zoom. Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I know the referendum's up on the voice website. You're gonna put the other one up tomorrow? For the candidates?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, uh, we also want to acknowledge that, uh, well, I'm gonna let, uh, Matt explain it.
Sure, uh, we'd like to acknowledge that the town has hired Lydia Lawless of Kramer and Graham to serve as counsel with regard to the declaratory judgment regards to the BCT GM building at 10401 Connecticut Avenue. Um, we have a resolution for the contract, uh, with Ms. Lawless, uh, later this evening and we'll provide more information.
Okay, would you wanna just update on just that we have, have answered the?
Yes, uh, they have, uh, Senate response as of this afternoon, um, and then they will be filing a, um, a counter by July 3rd. Uh, and Lydia said she'd have that by June 20th, so, yeah, they filed the response back.
Okay, so Ella, do you have anything more to add to that? Are you, no?
They or we?
No, yeah, Matt said it accurately.
Okay, yeah, the lawyers responded on our behalf.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Um, and we did send the letter out, uh, to the Maryland Cannabis Administration. We have not received directly any, um, uh, response, uh, but I know that, uh, Gabe Abernass, uh, he sent out a draft letter.
Yeah, I believe it's going out. It's gonna go out later this afternoon.
Okay, okay, and then, uh, he'll share that with everybody.
Yep.
When it comes out. Um, is there any questions on what we've covered so far? Let's see, questions, okay. All right, we'll keep moving along.
No, sorry. Thank you.
His last meeting.
My last meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, let's go move on down to, uh, number three, the St. Paul, uh, Park Alcohol Waiver, which we have done previously for events held in our parks. So we will, we just wanna make a motion.
Just need a motion.
Okay, so we wanna make a motion to waive the alcohol, uh, or waive allowing alcohol, uh, for the Juneteenth event on June 14th. Do we wanna add the 15th as well, which is the rain date?
Yeah, you can add that.
Yeah.
Okay, I will make a motion. And I'm looking for that number where to make.
Uh, there's, yeah, there's no number, it's just, yeah.
Um, yes, I move that we approve the, and provide a waiver to allow alcohol at the St. Paul Park for the town's Juneteenth celebration, which is scheduled for the 14th, and any event of rain will happen on June 15th.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, and we're gonna do an update. Oh, Jody, question?
Well, while we're just on Juneteenth, I wanna thank the town, especially Alex and Matt and Susan for all their support of Juneteenth. We really, we really, really appreciate it.
Great.
And can I also ask, what's the flavor of that cake? Is that for everybody?
Come on down.
You can jump in your car and be here in two minutes.
I know, but what's the flavor? I wanna.
Put a piece in the chat for you.
What is the flavor, Alex? You bought it?
It's vanilla.
Vanilla.
Oh, okay, then I might come over. Thank you. I don't come over for chocolate, vanilla I might.
Vanilla, you might come over?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if we end early, I can deliver a piece of cake for you if you want.
Oh, even better.
While you're doing that, I'll take some too, if you don't mind.
All right, I'll head over to the north side and stop dropping off cake. All right, and I, I know the, uh, the banner, the final banner with the sponsors, I think, has gone to press. I think I talked to Carrie Anne this morning, and she said it was going to the printer, so. All right, so that's great. Um, number four, MCPS boundary study, uh, Connor?
Um, so Montgomery County Schools is in the process of doing two boundary studies, uh, one for up county, kind of Crown High School, which has been, uh, redeveloped, and then down county by us for the reopening of Woodward High School, which would impact students, um, in the 27, 28 timeline. Where we are in the process is just to keep people informed, and is they just released four options. Those four options are each tied to the four principles that they were trying to address, things like school overcrowding, articulation, racial and social equity balancing. So they're, in some regards, you know, as far as it looks at the town of Kensington, like three of the options show us, uh, KP students then going to Silver Creek Middle School, which is obviously right outside the town's south border, and then matriculating up to Walter Johnson, which is where we are currently boundary, and one option, it would take Kensington and pull it into the Newport Mill and Einstein Boundaries. Um, for residents, what's most important is they are in the community engagement part of this for the first round of options. So there are four options. They are asking residents to take a survey that is on the, uh, boundary study website to let them know what you like about each option, what you don't like about each option, recommendations of how to adjust the four options that they've given. So the four options are the starting basis. From there, through that round of community engagement, they will make minor adjustments to those four options, and then they will put out updated versions of options in the, um, August timeframe, July, August timeframe. Timeframes have mostly been holding, but, um, the idea is that then they would take all of that comment, revise those maps, put them back out for a second round in the August, September timeframe. Again, ask for community engagement. What do you think about the adjustments that were made? What do you like? What do you not like? Um, they would go back and make further tweaks, and then send those to the school board for the school board's review. Ultimately, it is the school board's decision which option to take and present, um, as the new boundaries for both of those catchment areas. Um, just some points, uh, you know, of note. The superintendent so far has recommended that when the boundary is going to affect, rising 11th and 12th graders not be impacted. They remain in their school, as well as rising 8th graders. Some of the comments that I know I've seen through, like the KP list serve have been to also maybe include rising 7th graders, if that's important to you, that's a kind of comment to put into your community engagement, um, for consideration. But those are things that the superintendent has recommended, but is ultimately the Board of Education that will make a decision on how rising 12th or 11th or 8th graders are impacted or not impacted. Uh, as a reminder, the, this does not affect our elementary school assignments. Those are not being touched by this boundary study, but where Kensington Parkwood School children, um, matriculate to is potentially impacted. Um, the articulation in, you know, one option, I believe it's option one, is that they go whole school onto Silver Creek. But options two and four, you know, would split the school based on geography, and part of it would go to Silver Creek, and part of it would go to, I believe, Tilden, right? So those are the, the nuances of those options. The biggest thing is there are interactive maps. There is a ton of data that is available on the boundary study website. Please, you know, take time to review it, engage with it. They're holding open, uh, office hours on like, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Fridays, that you can go and ask questions of, um, the Montgomery County staff that has put this together. You can fill out the community engagement survey, and then be engaged when round two comes out. Um, as far as the town is, you know, just some history with us, the town at one point was split between three different boundaries, with one side, you know, Einstein, BCC, and, and Walter Johnson. Um, the council, and, you know, I don't know, what was the, the timeframe of that? They, they pulled the whole town together, and we were assigned to the Walter Johnson cluster where we are now.
At least 20 years ago.
Yeah, and we've remained that way, and it's, you know, a lot of our community sense of self is derived from the fact that all kids in the town of Kensington go to Kensington Parkwood, then on to North Bethesda, then on to WJ, and the AK, and all of these things are because we have our community schools. So that is, um, you know, something that I know has been important to our identity as a town, and so do we as a body want to weigh in on writing a letter about the things that we like about the options, don't like about the options, or are important to us as a town? And I think that would be beneficial, and we can, you know, if we agree to write a letter tonight, we can work on a draft of that, um, in the next, you know, week or so.
I, I think it would be a good idea. Anybody object?
I agree.
Right, good.
So.
So you wanna draft something?
What would some of the principles be that you think, like, keeping the town together, or keep cohesion to the current boundaries as to the extent possible is?
Yeah, I mean, I think keeping the town together isn't, I believe is personally important. Um, obviously, since KP is not impacted, that we, you know, articulate to the same school. I personally, you know, it just so happens that three of the four options push us into Silver Creek. I think that would be amazing, because for a lot of our community, that would be the first time ever they would be in the walking shed for middle school. And even my kids, even though I'm on the north side of the train tracks, I would be completely comfortable with my kids, because they do it every Saturday for the farmer's market, going down and then biking to school. And that's an option that I don't have. Um, the, but I also think there are principles and values that we may wanna espouse about just the whole look of the map, not just our boundaries, but, you know, what are the positives, you know, option two, for instance, actually achieves, um, 80 to 100% school occupancy across every high school and middle school in the county. That is something we don't have. We have certain schools right now that are at 135% capacity.
And Walter Johnson.
Walter Johnson is one.
Walter Johnson will go from 3,100 currently, projected to grow to 3,500 before this goes into place, and then go down to 2,000.
It would be from 136% to 92%.
92, yeah, 2,000 kids and a 2,100 is, I mean, huge.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think that's a very important consideration. Now, for our cluster and the schools they are recommending, most of the options achieve that for us. Option one does it for all but like three schools, Wheaton, Kennedy, and Blair, which would still, they would still be over 100 at 102, 107, and I think Wheaton at like 111, 111%. Um, so, you know, there, I think, achieving that kind of balance in the school capacity, I think is, is a value that to recommend, um, but also the idea of community. Um, option three splits the county kind of all over the place. It creates what they're referring to as tentacles and islands. Um, in fact, in one area, you have high schools that other parts of the county will draw into, but the entire neighborhood around that school does not even go to that school. It's.
I was on a call with the Chevy Chase mayor today, and they're not liking three.
Three, interesting, because it takes parts of Chevy Chase and, and pulls them over into Tacoma, but then it takes parts of Tacoma and pulls them up to Silver Spring.
Impossible to, uh.
I think.
Travel wise.
I also think operationally, I mean, uh, we got stuck in our regular Tuesday traffic just coming here tonight. Um, but I ran one of my kids to a sports practice before this, and, um, Connecticut Avenue is backed up almost to salt, as it is many weekdays. Um, and so the operational logistics to get all those movements in an option three, I think, is, would be beyond the capacity of Montgomery County Schools. So.
Right.
Those are some of the things I'd love, if anybody's got others.
I mean, I, I like that ones that you've highlighted so far. I have found, these options were just released last week. I know there's been chatter on listserv, but I think it would be useful to have time to talk to some more residents and get their views on it, and I haven't really had time to do that this week. Um, but I would like to, maybe we'll hear some tonight. Um, but that's one thing that's been on my mind.
Yeah, it has, it's not been, um, well, there were other things going on, but it hasn't been a topic that's been like on our lists or really more, uh, informational from Connor, and I think Dave Bedet, that was about it. So, um, I mean, we could have something to give people that opportunity.
What was the deadline again, uh, for the, this window?
Yeah, um, I'm on the website now. It is, um. So they just completed our sessions last week, and then Crown Sessions this week, upcoming phase two, that they want this back by.
I don't have any notes. Of course, and, uh, the bus stop at St. Paul Park is half of KP, I think.
It is, and it's not getting smaller.
Yeah. You can get good feedback from there.
Yeah, so.
A lot of those kids too have siblings in North Bethesda and Walter Johnson as well. Because you're gonna find the parents at the elementary school bus stops less so at middle and senior.
So, um, so the open office, uh, the office hours that they're holding, the virtual office hours are Tuesdays, 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, Thursday, 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and Friday is 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM. Those go for the next couple of weeks. But I'm looking for the date that Ann was referencing.
I'm just thinking of the, with the survey that they have, if it's not for a certain point, I was thinking that was maybe our window.
Leslie Freed might be just trying to weigh in if that answer.
Leslie, did you have something to add to that?
Yes, thank you, and, um, thank you Connor for your overview. One other issue that you might wanna think about is the split articulation that some of the options have for middle school and to high school.
Yep.
So just a thought.
Yeah, that's an example of an issue I wanna talk to more people about, so far I've only talked about it within my household.
Yeah.
Well, I think some of the splits also happen in elementary, right? I mean, they don't all go to the same, like, how they all footage.
Some options will have KP staying together to a middle school. Some options will have KP split to two different middle schools. Some options will, and then, and, um, you know, what we're talking about is then when you get to like Silver Creek, you could split again.
Right.
And so some kids could have two moments where they split, and, and so the discussion is, you know, childhood friendships are really important. They're important for social development. They're important for mental health. And if at each time they change schools, the friends and the community that they have are getting separated, right? Just the impact that that has, especially in what these will be, a lot of COVID generation school kids.
Right.
So that, that's why articulation has, um, monitoring like the KP list, it's been an issue that's been coming up of,
Okay.
what is something important to a lot of people advocating on behalf of KP.
Okay, I mean, I, I grew up in Arlington County, and we split in elementary. We split in middle school or junior high, and we finally ended up in a high school, sometimes back with people that you did split with, so.
And so I think part of the issue is that there are options that don't cause splitting.
Yeah.
And end up, you know, in, you know, Walter Johnson and Silver Creek, there are options that do split. And so much of the town would still be Walter Johnson and Silver Creek, but part of KP.
Would go somewhere.
Would go elsewhere.
Okay.
So, yes.
I mean, I think, I agree that we should, let's take some time as much of the.
To write a letter tomorrow.
I know, but I think it would be good if I, if you start drafting something.
Yeah.
To, I'm of the view that we should probably do it less about the specific options and more about the principles that we wanna maintain or what we wanna avoid, because we can, these boundaries are going to be tweaked and changed a little bit, so we don't wanna be sending a letter.
We want it.
Every time, we want it, yeah, we want opposing or being, you know, for a certain option. It's more about what, you know, the letter will serve to, for whatever options proposed, I guess, or whatever iteration of it.
Yep.
Okay. And then we'll figure out some ways of maybe bringing some people together. Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe do some copies or something. Um, here at town hall.
Our own office hours.
Our own office hours, yeah.
All right, let's see if I've got a date here.
Yeah, they didn't have one listed at the top of the survey.
Yeah, I just saw that too. Um, generally, the date is, so they are taking the feedback now through the community engagement and the option, and the survey. They will be synthesizing that feedback over July and August and put out the refined options. Um, they will then continue the, you know, call it round two, is how they've referred to it, over September. Um, they will take more feedback, probably another round of surveys out of, up, round two's options. They will synthesize that over October and into November, and release their, um, kind of final option in the November timeline with the idea that the superintendent's recommendation would be December, and the Board of Education needs to make their decision by March of 26. So because there's, once that decision of where the boundaries are occurs in March of 26, they still have, you know, a year plus that they have to do for transit planning, food planning, all the things to make those boundaries realistic.
Okay.
So noticing of households as to what their new school assignments are, all of that.
Okay, well, it sounds like by the end of the month? I mean.
I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'll start draft, and we can.
Right.
New one.
Okay.
Let's start at board points.
Good. All right. Sounds good. Any questions from the audience or anybody else online? Yep, let's see, so we will move on. Okay, uh, next month, uh, at our next meeting, we need to schedule. We were, we'll have an organizational meeting beforehand. Uh, typically, it would be July 9th, but I'm going out of town.
I'm busy too.
Well, we hope you're busy, Darren. We hope you're not sitting at home. So we need, um, a date other than, um.
So are we trying to do it before the 4th of July holiday, or is that cutting it too tight?
Well, if you're going away, I'm not going away. We tried to do it the second. And Stuart, I need you to, uh, give us your, uh, date options as well. So this would be for the organizational meeting that would start at 6:00, and followed by a town council meeting at 7:00. We could do the 7th or the 8th.
Is that better than the first or the second?
It, it, for me, it doesn't matter.
I may be out of town.
I'll be out.
Yeah.
7:30, 8:00 would work.
Oh, you're gonna be out the first and the second?
Okay.
Are you too?
Um, I was thinking I might be coming the 7th and the 8th, I'm positive. We could do 14, 15, 16.
Yeah, I would be back by now, if you wanted to push it that late, but I don't know if you do.
I don't, I mean.
Doesn't hurt because we might not have an August meeting, right?
Right.
So, we can do that week too.
That week also works for me, Mayor.
The week of the 14th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any of those days.
So would you wanna do a Wednesday, just to, because we do Wednesdays?
Sure.
So the 16th?
Sure.
All right, so, yes, no?
I know Stuart's gonna be in this situation. Those are swim meets nights. Can we do it on a Tuesday or?
We can do it on Tuesday.
What do you think?
I wanna be flexible with children's needs, so their parents can attend that. So this is very important. 15th?
Yeah, let's do that.
Jody, did you have a question?
If you do it on the 15th, you have to have another cake, because it's my birthday.
Oh.
When I was at the 15th is the.
Sounds like we'll have another cake. I will deliver it to your home.
Just saying.
No, she doesn't watch out.
I thought that was funny.
I, I'm gonna put that in my phone, Jody's birthday.
On the 7 or 6 PM?
Well, we need to do 6, because we need to have an organizational meeting first. So, um, all right, everybody got that?
Yes, I got the 15.
Yeah, you got that, Darren?
Got it.
Okay. I'm still putting Jody's birthday up here. Don't think I'm kidding. And it's all day, right? Okay, so we are going to meet on the 15th at 6 o'clock. All right, nobody's allowed to go out of town, so we're good. Um, and, uh, Stuart, I will be able to swear you in anytime after July 1. And so you just tell me when and where, and I'm happy to, um, travel.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I will get back to you as soon as possible with some.
Okay, sounds good. Um, let's see, something else, I was gonna. I didn't feel that it'll come back. I didn't have a pen today, so I couldn't write things down ahead of time. Oh, you're, no, I don't, I forgot now. If I remember it, I'll grab the pen. Uh, all right, well, let's go through, uh, reports from the, um, council. Darren, big report?
Do, do you want my report now?
That's it.
I, I'll, I'll make this quick, because I'm pretty sure nobody wants to hear this except me, and I already know it.
Oh.
Um, uh, I've just really enjoyed the last 12 years in the council, um, along with a couple of years before that on the various committees. I look back at the past and present members like Paul Sexton and Tommy Rodriguez and, um, Sean McMullin, not to leave out the great, uh, but then you guys, Mayor Tracy, Connor, and Ann. And I just really appreciate all the heavy lifting you guys have done. Uh, good luck, Stuart. Uh, I just feel like we've gotten a lot of stuff done over the years. We got through COVID together, kept the farmer's market open. We, uh, seen developments like Modena, Metropolitan, Silver Creek, um, Knowles. We got Noel Station, we have the, uh, the town homes across from that, and, and we defeated the self-storage proposal that, that, when it became clear that it was a terrible deal for the town. All is not done. I'm gonna leave it to you and your children and grandchildren to finish the Southern Avenue extension. Um, and I'm gonna leave it to Stuart to get the big dig burial. I'm trying, Stuart, the town. Um, but I, I feel like I'm leaving a council that's, that really works well together, and it makes the town a better place for us all. And, um, with that, I move to adjourn.
Uh, there'll be no second on that one. I will not ask for a second. We do have other things we have to do. So, well, thank you, Darren. Um, and, uh, we will, uh, thank you further as we, after we get through this, this round. Ann?
Oh, well, yes, we will, we will turn to that soon. Um, a few just short updates. You already heard a preview from Jody and, and our earlier agenda item at the Kensington's Fourth Annual Juneteenth Event. Will be Saturday, June 14th in St. Paul Park. A lot of volunteers have been putting in a lot of effort. For those of you that haven't attended yet, it is a wonderful community event. Lots of music, lots of learning, um, arts groups, uh, history groups, there's food, there's kids' activities. We are still looking for volunteers. SSL hours are available for middle school and high school students. I believe that request went out on the list serve already. It's been on several emails. Um, so we encourage people to sign up and to show up, and I, I wanna also thank the town staff for all the support for this year's event. Um, secondly, I just wanted to mention that I was able to join Mayor Tracy and, uh, Stuart. Was also there on Memorial Day at Ernest Memorial Park for a very lovely, um, remembrance occasion led by our, um, resident Jim Renza, uh, Stuart Freeman and others participating. And it was really nice to see so many people gathered in that space as we're looking at how to refresh.
It was a very good turnout.
It was very nice. It was very nice. We even had, we had all generations from little babies and kids uh, all the way to seniors. Um, we had an opportunity to hear from a few veterans and their families about what they like to see in the space, more benches, um. Obviously, brushing it, which we're working on. I got an update from Matt. Um, that the uh, landscape designer is working on a new design that we'll be able to preview and have the greenscape committee weigh in on and be onsite um, later this summer. So I think those are all the updates I had. Um, Nate, do you want to do?
Um, when it's my turn.
Parking task force.
She's done it, she returns. Good.
Okay. Should I go? Okay, um, yeah, so for the Sustainable Kensington, we met uh, last week, about last week, yeah. And we have, we have a couple of things that we've been working on, um, several of them we've mentioned here, uh, but I wanted to mention one more. In a moment, but we've been, been doing this stormwater um, roadmap for investments that we've been working with the Green Bank, the Montgomery County Green Bank on. With the um. Some pro bono work that they've given us through a consultancy that they have with the pre-collective. It's a, a firm that helps to guide. Um, governments and stakeholders around decisions to, 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 to think of creative decisions to. To issues like we have, which is funding, financing and thinking more kind of holistically about our stormwater network. And how to, how to mitigate those risks moving forward as they increase with climate change. So we're making progress on that. Um, we also have an action plan that we are implementing against that is three years. Um, we actually have to redo the act, we have to update our action plan. And recertify for Sustainable Kensington, believe it or not, we're going into the last year of our certification, which lasts for three years. So next, this next year, we need to collect all the actions, document what we did, um, and. Submit, and we'll see if we can submit for silver certification. We have enough points this year or it'll be bronze again, but we will submit by about this time next year. So the, the next meetings will be focused on that. Um, the thing we want to update you on and get your feedback, actually, um, I think I indicated to some of you about this was that. We were discussing expanding or how we can help to support our E chart, electric vehicle charging network in the town, whether it's on public. Um, uh, uh, within the public. Public property that we own or county owns or state owns, uh, or private properties and what we can do to help to facilitate that as a town. So um, several of the members uh, have been working on, reporting on this and researching it, including ways to access financing for, for incentives for doing it. Um, one thing that came up in the discussion was the idea of putting together an ordinance that the town could do that could help to. Facilitate a little bit more easier, like. Public charging, um, access to charging across the right of way. Uh, making it a little clearer, more clearer what, what is allowed and what's not allowed. Um, just to create a, a better, more, more clarity in our regulation or actually create. Or in ordinance in some part of the code that can, can address electric vehicle charging. Plus potential incentives that we can get people to, um, maybe we can have some incentives that we want to research that we could put into it as a, a more comprehensive piece of.
I was, I was gonna ask Sue Ellen. Sue Ellen, have you done any ordinances for doing um, that in public right of way, EV chargers?
Yes. And there are, there are also specified rules that the state applies.
Okay. And can you provide some information to, to the council? At some point or a, a sample of the ordinance that you did?
Certainly.
Okay.
Great, and we've also asked M M L, um, the Maryland Municipal League and the Sustainable Maryland people for examples. And we've got uh, an information dump from, from the Green Bank. Or sorry, from um, from Sustainable Maryland that we have to go through yet.
Okay.
But I think it would be anchored around the right of way charging issue. So um, thanks for offering to help Sue Ellen. But if there's anything else that we would add to it, we'll come back to you as we research it, if that's okay.
Okay, yeah, sounds good.
You guys have pulled Montgomery County's guidelines for public right of way.
Yeah, I think, I think we have.
Yeah, I mean, they're very. What I would call common sense, right? They've thought some of these through, but I think it's something that we could consider. Like there, some of the things are, it only applies to households that don't have off-street parking. Right, to, to putting into the public right of way, you know. Um, but they've got a whole pamphlet on, like a six-page PDF. It's pretty good.
Yep, yep, um, yeah, exactly. We, we'll, uh, we'll make sure that they get that. So yeah, we just wanted to give a heads up and get the thumbs up that we can.
Yeah, no, I think that would be great. I mean, I think having things in writing, so when people do come in, especially for staff, they, they already have the. Blue torrent that they follow and you know, if there's a hiccup there, then they can come to the council, but otherwise, you know, it should be something that the staff can just handle.
When, I'm just thinking through how this could raw, like, even down to, would this qualify for a variance? Or let's say you had off-street parking. But for whatever reason. You find it's not optimal and you still wanted to try and install the charging in the public right of way. Would that qualify under our current variance? Process?
Yeah, we would need to consider that too. And also what would be the. Requirements that if, if you do it, what, you know, there's strips that you have to put over, and we have to research what works.
Is there a particular this in your house that they, it's better to have the charger coming from the direct box?
So there's different, I mean, there's a type one, type two, type three chargers. Type one, you plug into the wall and it's the slowest.
Three days to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, a type two charger, you'd have an electrician come out, you run a separate line off of your main box, and you have a dedicated charger on the side of your house.
So you really want to be close to your box?
Cheaper that way.
Yeah, it's cheaper, um, they, like, like mine has a twenty-five foot cable, so even when I'm not. The first car closest to the hookup, like the cable reaches my whole driveway.
Right.
Um, but you know, the county's guidelines are concerned about things like, hey, like, they're very specific. You actually have to put this underground. You cannot. Put a cable across a, a sidewalk, the county's, per the county's guidelines. But then if you use conduit and you put it underground, they also are very specific about how many inches from the curb it has to be. And you know, within a tree box and looking at their guidelines, I was like, oh, like my street, the tree box is too narrow. I don't, it wouldn't qualify. And you know, unless we, again, unless there's a variance process that we wanted to, to look at, but their, their whole thing is. Making sure it still leaves sidewalks safe and operable, um, but also that what they're trying to prevent is. You know, we've had this with people putting up basketball hoops. The crew goes by to do something and they, the hoop is actually hanging over the street. We clip it, we, you know, we're removing snow and things and we don't want to. If damage occurs to it and it's in the right way. Whose responsibility?
Right.
You know, all those considerations.
Yeah.
So. If he gets. Left somehow gets bumped, knocked off, the cable goes in the street, it gets. Driven over, you know, there's a. It's just considerations that.
Oh, sure.
But like I said, the county thought through some of that.
Yeah.
So.
Does anybody have any questions in the audience or online? Let's see, any hints? Okay.
Um, one more update. Um, so I spoke with Matt about this last week. I um. The Silver Creek trash debacle that happened, it was filled up and then they came and removed it. Um, I had gone, I, I went by there a week or so ago. And looked and was with, just assessing the situation and it's not right, there's.
Yeah, it looks like there's some mud that is piled up.
Some sedimentation or something is changing, is changed the hydrological flow of, of the.
There's this uh, murbura on it.
As it's, something happened, I think, I don't know when, maybe it was a storm or maybe they did some work and, or maybe it's just sediment buildup, but it's serving like on the. On the Cabin Park side, like a dam, it's blocking the water from flowing into the, like, being a stream beyond the bridge. So I asked Matt if he, I don't know if you were, if you have an update on this about um, who you're gonna contact, but I said I'm happy to run point. In writing a letter to Parks and Planning, just about this issue, just to. Get them to, to, to address it and work with the state, work with us. And in that letter, include things like the Cabin Park. Um. Um, flooding, the, the, the ability to let the park flood better or engineer it to flood better, like we have talked about as kind of green infrastructure solution for flooding. Um, and include that in kind of the, the overall engagement that we want to have to push. The, the Parks and Planning to, to work with us a little more closely.
Okay.
So if you're okay with that, I'll, I'll work with Matt on putting a letter together. And who would it go to? You said?
Maybe.
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 Yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean, something Tracy and I have been talking about for a while as well. Sending in a letter about some other issues.
Yeah, but we'll just add it. Let's all, that's out of the line because I think we need, we can use this as an opportunity to.
There's uh, someone who has experience with that, that we could bring in to talk to? If necessary?
You mean like?
I mean, somebody who works with, yeah.
I'm sure there's.
I mean, you could, I wonder with our pre-collective and Green Bank conversations.
Yeah.
I know.
I mean, is there somebody? Get a, or expertise? Yeah, and expert.
Yeah, who could assess it, is, this is not.
Right.
Brutus has already assessed it. Brutus Engineering and Associates.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
As an engineering, not as an environmentalist?
As an engineering tactic, you know, to, for a number of reasons. One, the flow of the creek at the culvert. And then the actual Kensington Cabin Park to use as a flood plain, a natural flood plain. So we, we can just take analysis from that.
Yeah, but they may not have updated one where it's basically changed the hydraulics of the, of the flow.
So you're saying they may have something that's like a baseline of a couple of years ago?
Mm-hmm, that we could compare it against and say, hey, look, it's not flowing. It's flowing on the upstream side and then it hits there and it's just.
And stops, yeah.
And then it's just a little trickle out. I mean, that's not good for the ecology of the stream. It's not good for. And more trash is gonna build up there in the next storm and that's why it did in the first place, probably.
Well, no, it's trees. There were a lot of big trees stuck in there.
Yeah, so maybe there's something.
Still stuck in there.
Yeah, blocking it.
Yeah.
Um, okay. If you could get me the report, I could look at it too. And then we can ask, uh, we can ask the pre-collective what they can say. In Green Bank. Maybe we can offer some.
I think it would be kind of helpful to if we had. Better information on it when we present the letter to, you know, we have some expert of what's going on. Rather than relying on parks.
How do we solicit that?
Well, first to find out who you would talk to. What science?
Is there a hydrologist?
There you go, a hydrologist.
That's what.
Is that what you would use?
That's what Brutus is.
Could they just reassess it?
Yeah, we could bring them to reassess it. Um, Parks has uh, a hydro engineer on staff.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm very nervous that they would send them out. I mean, we can ask.
Yeah.
But. Yeah, he could very well just come out and say, oh, it's fine, it's fine.
Which is what they typically say.
Yeah.
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 Always get your own expert.
Yeah.
Well. Thank you, Nate. I think having a second opinion is.
And once you get the data, I can. Put it into a letter.
Okay.
And whatever other issues you want to sprinkle in there.
There's a whole bunch.
Okay, good. Any questions? We already made your report. Yeah, okay, Connor?
Uh, nothing from the parking committee, but since we're on the topic of. Weather and things falling into creeks and trees, uh, one is just a, a shout out to Jason and Marco especially. For the big storms of last week, uh, we had several trees that came down along Connecticut, uh, uh. Kensington Parkway and Metropolitan and um, Barragut, uh, Frederick, Frederick. And it was great, we, you know, these trees over Friday night after business, but gave them the addresses and some photos. And they had them cleared in moments where, I don't know, other trees around on county property are still sitting there. They're out of, you know. Remove the emergent issue, but uh, just appreciated that they were so quick to get those roads back open because they was quickly becoming. A traffic nightmare. Um, but Matt, that does lead me to a question. Um. Just health of trees overall and especially. Former Joseph Park, um, if they're, what the update of the health of the trees are there in that one branch that. I talked to you about over Plyar's Mill, because that one gives me considerable concern.
So we have a risk assessment filed on Joseph's Park uh, from December. Uh, the twenty-one inch walnut is gonna be removed. Uh, probably within the next week, uh, and the main lead that's overhanging Plyar's Mill Road will also be removed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that one, if that one were to come down, I think it would be.
Yeah.
The whole tree, not just the limbs? That's, that's the last time we talked about it.
The twenty-one inch, which is the smaller walnut, is gonna be completely removed.
Oh, not the large one?
The fifty-one inch, I think it's fifty-one inch walnut, somewhere around there. Uh, the main lead that goes over Plyar's Mill. Uh, will be removed. The rest of the crown will remain.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two people killed and hit by a tree in that, that storm.
Right, and that's.
Yeah.
Prompted me to ask Matt about that one specifically. So, thanks, Matt. Um, that's all I have.
Okay, good. Yeah. Um, I did remember now what I wanted to ask and that was, and actually, um, Nate mentioned it, is an August recess. We did that last year and wanted to check with the council if you wanted to. Um, do an August recess. A lot of people traveling at that time of year too, so.
It's fine with me.
What's on behalf of committee meetings? Well, committee meetings are fine. Committee meetings are fine, are you, although you do find them tougher to do in early August because of, a lot of people are traveling, especially till mid-August. Um, so, do you want to? I don't know. Stuart, do you mind if we take August off? Is that a problem for you?
No, I, I, no, no issues for me.
Okay, just checking. Okay. Uh, do we need a motion on that, Matt, or you were just gonna, we've decided to recess?
No, I, I think we're okay.
Okay, okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, um, and the other thing, let's see, I got that, but um, we're good. Oh, I want to say something nice about. So, you know. I lost him. Forty out there, where? Seventy bucks. No, I'm looking for the other thing. Was it behind you? Was it? Oh, it's behind me. Thank you, thank you, Anne.
I thought you were gonna go to the podium and give your name and street.
I was hoping she just walked out.
We got it.
So. Tracy Furman, Dietrich Avenue. So it's pretty traditional that when someone has uh, done something great. Or been a member of the council, that we provide a proclamation for that person. So we want to continue that tradition. So Darren, we have a proclamation for you. Whereas, there's a lot of whereas's in this if you don't know about proclamations. Whereas Darren Bartram was the first, was first elected to the Kensington Town Council on June third, two thousand thirteen. And whereas, council member Bartram was subsequently. He was reelected for five additional terms and whereas. Council member Bartram has served as council liaison to the Audit Committee, council liaison to the Ethics Commission. Co-chair of the Development Review Board, D R B, since its establishment and chair of the Traffic Committee during his service with the town and. Whereas. Council member Bartram's leadership has guided the town through numerous redevelopment projects. The easing of Kensington's alcohol regulations. Advocating for the implementing a twenty mile per hour speed limit on town streets. And always finding regulatory loopholes for the town and whereas. After twelve years serving as the council's fact-finder. Council member Bartram has decided to retire after six successful elections while managing to miss. Every single Labor Day parade and festival and process. Now, therefore, being proclaimed by the virtue and authority vested in me as the mayor of the town of Kensington, I do hereby deem. It an honor and a pleasure to recognize Darren Bartram on this third day of June, two thousand twenty-five. For his outstanding service to the town of Kensington and confirm his use of a golf cart. If he actually attends any future Labor Day parade and festival, as long as he is a resident of the town of Kensington.
I'm telling you. Very nice.
So alongside, I want to give Darren a key to the uh, to the town. Uh, which has my name on it, so you will always remember me. Uh, but Darren and I have been friends for a very long time. And he's been a, a big supporter and I will truly, truly miss you, Darren, on the town council.
Thank you.
So. Thank you. And we have another gift for you.
And I might come back and speak from the podium.
I could, please. So we have another gift for you, Darren. And um, because. This is from the mayor and the council.
They just came in the mail today, the chicks. They just came in the mail today, the chicks.
Somebody on this call is not gonna be happy about chicks.
Oh my gosh.
You cannot leave Kensington without a Jason Swain.
Original.
Original. And this is a little junior earnest eagle that we want you to have, which will hopefully always remind you of it.
Aw. Well, thank you.
You're welcome. So you don't have to. And you don't have to pick these up either. So I just picked that up from Jason today.
That's beautiful.
So, yeah, so.
Very cool.
I wouldn't even swat sign.
But isn't named.
This year, it's like.
We have to name it.
Yeah.
Let's have a referendum.
So he just padded with to come into the house and it's good luck.
All right, well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I, I gave back the official key.
Yes, of course, well, I. So please, Anne, you start.
Well, Darren, I wanna join Mayor Tracy and thanking you for your service. I think twelve years is pretty remarkable. Um, considering the number of hours that must represent, not only in town council meetings, but in community meetings and committee meetings. And as a relative newcomer to the council, I have appreciated um how you are always. Quick to ask questions to make sure that we justify the record for variance. Been an important role that you play and we're gonna have to make sure that we carry that forward. But also how you bring a common sense approach to our conversations and trying to kind of cut through all the noise to figure out what's the straightest path to. Get to a solution that preserves what the town cares about, what our residents care about. So thank you for um being just an outstanding colleague on the council and for everything you've done uh for the community.
Thank you.
Nate?
Yeah, I was gonna say many similar things, but just to echo my colleagues. Um, thank you for your service. Uh, when I first came into town council in twenty twenty, it was right in the middle of COVID. So we were doing a lot of Zoom meetings, we didn't, I, we had met before, but. Not, we didn't know each other that well, but we were thrown into an assignment that the mayor gave us. To look into our election code and reforming it, so teasing out all of the nitty gritties around how we could improve it. For virtual voting, for absentee ballots, to make it. Much more streamlined, so for example, we didn't have to have an election when there were candidates. Uh, running opposed, but I learned a lot from, from Darren in that first. Assignment, I would say, and just how important it is to um. How important the code and the ordinances are for guiding our work, and he always, as Ann mentioned, goes back into it, whenever we have an issue that comes up. Um, there's either a, you know, referring back to what does this mean for our, our bylaws or our code? Ordinances or how can we use them and our powers of the town to, to protect the interests of the town and really. You're always acting in, in, in the, in the interests of, of the community and I, I firmly believe that. Um, and also just the institutional knowledge that you've had. Um, appreciate all of the questions that you ask, you always ask very. Um, point, pointed and articulate questions and I always learn from the way that you're investigating an issue, so. I, I really appreciated the opportunity to work with you. Uh, we're gonna miss you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks. No, um. Uh, I've said this before to Darren, but when I joined the council. Darren was the first phone call I had made, was already, we were. Uh, forming the DRB and we were talking about development and it was not my background and it's a bunch of nuanced little things. And I called with what I thought was a simple question, I don't ask simple questions, um, very long-winded, but. Right away, I think we sat and talked for almost two hours and Darren just took me through things very methodically. Helped me to understand the history of things in the town, just, you know, how we got here as a town. Other developments that worked, things that didn't work that were before my time to help give me kind of a flavor in a sense of, you know. Where things have left the, the tracks a little bit. Um, the other thing that has been amazing personally for me is. That I tend to use many words when fewer will do. And there are many times where I think I have my thoughts together, but I will share them with Darren. Who helps trim that all down to, to get to what you guys said, to the most important parts of it, which is a. It's a very important part of communication and this job. And how you talk about things and how you communicate with people is extremely important. And so being able to be succinct and being able to get your point across quickly are art forms that over the last. Eight years that I've been on the council with Darren are, you're a master at it and I do appreciate it. I want to second. Your ability to ask. Tough but fair questions to get to the heart of, of the matter. Um. You know, we have some powers up here, but our biggest power is to ask questions, especially on the DRB. These are very consequential meetings where it turns out the record of those meetings. Months and sometimes like over a year later came up in court cases. And because we asked the right questions and we were properly prepared and we properly took notes of those meetings. Um, the town was in the right and lawful justifiable position for pushing back. On what we wanted and what we didn't, and a lot of that credit goes to Darren. So, you know, when you look out at how the town is shaping and changing. That happens through hours and hours of work. On the DRB, you know, during the height of like twenty-one to twenty-two, we had four or five different applications going. Going back and looking at minutes, we were meeting sometimes two, three times a week and those sessions were two to three hours each. And that didn't include all the research that went into it, it didn't include all of the minutes and um messaging that had to happen afterwards. And another thing that we have talked about is that we've gone through. Successful developments and unsuccessful developments and large-scale change without. Division in the town or on the council and a lot of that has just been a quiet, steady hand in the DRB from Darren, you know. Cannot say enough and I hope to carry that forward, that a calmer, steadier way, which is not my nature. Um, is very effective. So it was, it was a lot of fun to watch a masterclass over the last eight years and I appreciate.
Thank you. I didn't realize I was so amazing, I might not.
Well, uh, I'll bless you, I'll bless you bubble right now. I, I've known Darren long enough that uh when he first ran for council, what, about thirty years ago?
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty years ago? I voted against him cuz I thought he was a jerk. Well, he was anti-funeral home and they were rabid about that, so that was coming in where the Montessori school is uh on Plyers Mill. And that was a big brouhaha within the town, but uh. I, I don't, I just remember meeting Darren, I was like, oh god, this guy's too rabid, I'm not, uh, I'm not sure about him, so I voted against her, but. Darren and I have been very good friends ever since and I. Darren helped me out in one of the saddest moments of my life when Maisie died and he was there for me, I still start quite about it. And um, so I remember sitting on his porch giving out candy on um his street. And we never really got a chance to talk cuz he's on Farragut and that runs around where Scary Perry is. I couldn't believe it, but it was, it was such. He was such a um. Good friend to me and I really appreciate that, Darren, I really do. And I will definitely miss you and the support that you have given me all these years as, as for me as an elected official. And um, I, I really, I know you're still, we'll be around. But uh, I will, I will miss you on the council. So.
Thank you.
So we do have cake, but we continue a little bit more and then we'll have cake, but. Did you wanna, anybody else wanna say anything, Matt?
Sure, um. I don't think people realize how much Darren has done outside of this room right here. Uh, if anyone remembers COVID and how influential Darren was with helping people get tests.
Oh, yeah.
Gets.
Yeah.
Um, he was uh all over the place, keeping the farmer's market open.
Yeah.
Uh, the thing I remember about Darren the most is working with him on Wilwood Time was called the Traffic Committee. Sean Atmone used to call it Fight Club for a reason and uh it was not that after Darren. Uh, took over the chairmanship of that and uh he's really helped to put policy together. Uh, made sure that we have traffic orders so we know what we're doing going forward, so in thirty years everyone knows what we're doing. Policies on speed humps, um, everything's really just kind of calmed down, you know, Connor kind of mentioned. Fewer words and a calm nature of Darren's and um really it's helped staff out with policy and moving forward. It's made our lives easier, so on behalf of the staff, we're incredibly grateful for Darren. Um, you know, working with you, everything from uh Scary Perry, just organizing that and. And uh working with you on some staff issues as well, you've always been helpful uh to lend uh along uh your legal knowledge. And um, he's been a great, great advocate for the town, for the staff, and I think we're all gonna really miss you, Darren. Thank you. Big shoes, Stuart.
Well, if anybody on the TV screen would like to make a comment or if uh anybody in the audience would, but um. We will um have, have some cake, but uh let's, let's uh, I would like to hear more about food waste before we. Oh, Jody, go ahead, Jody. You're on mute.
I, I, I just had a, a couple of questions and then one word about Darren. Um. Howard Avenue, the, when is it gonna, the lines, when are we gonna get that painted? The, the crosswalk and whatever, cuz I almost got killed walking over to get voted.
We're waiting on the contractor, they're behind from the weather, from the rain. Um, as soon, as soon as I know, I'll let everyone know.
Okay, we don't have a date yet, Jody, but we'll, we'll let you know as soon.
Yeah.
Okay. By the time you're getting ready to go on, you know.
Yeah, I'm leaving town tomorrow, so I won't get.
Yeah, so maybe when you get back, it'll be done.
Okay, um, and, and also, um, walking on that side of the road, um, I've noticed. Um, there's a lot of trash there on the train tracks. Um. I don't think it's from the homeless man, but there's a lot of trash. If I had gloves, I would pick, I would have picked it up myself, but. I didn't, so um, just, just to let you know.
Okay.
And um, what are the next steps now on the former Joseph Park?
It's, you want me to, it's very detailed.
But it's.
Uh, just, just in general.
Um, so the council will have to make a decision on the sale. Uh, we have not had that conversation internally, it'd probably require a work session. Maybe discussing at the organizational meeting. Um, I know we've had more questions about the HOA property, that is a very long process. Um, we are meeting uh formally with the HOA. Um, later this month, they will have a, a formal vote. Uh, we have a sales agreement that Sue Ellen, I'm working with Sue Ellen on. Uh, that they'll accept. Oh, there's actually a three-phase process for this, the first thing we need to do is we actually need to go to Montgomery Planning. Um, the site plan needs to be amended, so they can separate that out within the site plan for the project from nineteen ninety. So uh it can be used for public purpose by the, by the, by the town. This, after that is complete, we have to go through a mandatory referral with Montgomery Planning, uh and then we have to actually subdivide the lot. Now, once we start this process, we'll probably move forward with the greenscape to kind of figure out what we want to do with improvements. But the actual acquisition of the property is gonna take some time, so.
And I think when you say on the sale of Joseph's Park, you mean we have to decide on whether we use Sue Ellen as a.
You know, are we gonna use a realtor, you know, all kinds of, you know, are we gonna take closed bids, are we gonna put it out to open in market? These are things we have not discussed yet, so.
Okay, so it's gonna take a while.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, and uh Darren, congratulations.
Thank you, Jody.
That's it.
I'll see you around the hood.
Thank you, Jody. Okay, um, good, all right, uh, I would like to hear about, um, I don't have anything more to add. I will remind everybody about the Fourth of July Bike Parade. I know July seems far away, but we've already talked about it, I know. So uh I think Connor is hosting it in his front yard again.
Happy to.
Yeah, so uh his front yard is uh St. Paul Park. But uh. Look forward to uh, to that event. I was very happy that uh Canter Lindsay, who is leaving uh Temple Emmanuel. She actually got in touch with me and she is available to sing the National Anthem, which I was thrilled about cuz it was like, how do you replace?
Yeah.
Uh, Canter Lindsay, so, anyway. So I'm happy that she's gonna be able to do that. So uh let's uh, if we're good, can we just talk about the uh food uh waste collection before we?
Do you wanna move up public appearances or do you want me to?
No, I'd like to go do food waste.
Um, we received our thirteen gallon organic spins last week, finally. Um.
Thought you were gonna show it off.
Uh, we have one upstairs, we can bring, you wanna bring it? Um. There uh, it took about four months longer than we anticipated to get them. Uh, there was a number of issues with the supplier, but we finally received them. Uh, we have spoken to Ecology and the facility Bioenergy Devco. Uh, we're trying to confirm either a start date for Thursday, June nineteenth or Thursday, June twenty-sixth. The, June nineteenth is technically Juneteenth. Uh.
It's a federal holiday, but not necessarily.
Correct, the facility is open, uh, what we haven't been able to confirm is if Ecology has a team available.
Yeah.
Uh, so we have a direct mailer ready to go as soon as we can confirm that date, uh, we're just kind of.
Would it be better just to do the twenty-sixth?
I think we're gonna end up with that because we just haven't had confirmation with Jesse and the team over at Ecology. So I think it's gonna be in twenty, the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Um, the bins will be delivered directly to homeowners by the Public Works team. Inside the bin, uh, there will be a sticker with a QR code and a serial number, the serial number is assigned to the residential address. And the QR code brings you information, if you, if you click it, you uh go to our website, gets to information on the program. They'll also include a copy of the direct mail flyer if you don't, you know, you'll get it in the mail, but you'll have another copy. And that's the bin.
Ooh.
So. Um, and then we are also providing uh twenty compostable bags for residents to help start the program. Um, residents will be responsible for acquiring the bags after that, there is information. On the bags that we're using and where you can buy them, you can get them on Amazon or, or some other locations, but we'll be providing at least twenty ba, twenty bags. To start the program with the residents, so.
So I have a question.
Yep.
I have, I use little bags for my little container that I have sitting on my counter, can they just be thrown into that bin and not have to have a bigger bag?
The um, the facility's asked that we use the larger compostable baby uh bags to fit that.
Okay.
They have requested that.
But you can put the little bag. Okay, yeah, yeah, they practically fall apart when.
At least with our current vendor that we use, what they ask though is, don't knot off, tie off the little bag.
Oh.
Just take it out and put it into the big bag. That the knot sometimes gets caught up in.
Okay, interesting.
So.
Okay, that's, that's good.
Yeah, so we'll get the direct mail flyer out, um. Probably late this week.
Okay.
Be mailed out. Um. And then uh, yeah, most likely the first collection will be the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And um, you know, we're, we're anticipating, you know, a few bumps, but we'll get there.
Can we just say the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
I, I mean, it'd be nice to get it rolling, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just say the twenty-sixth.
I mean, the time's gonna fly by.
Yeah, but I think the sooner they can get the bins delivered, if they have them better.
We're anticipating delivering them next week.
Good.
Yeah.
You gonna leave them on the curb or take them to the porch?
We'll, we'll bring them up towards the, the front of the house. Yeah, we're not gonna leave them right in.
But we, you're gonna get the postcard first so that bins start coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a timing issue to make sure that, cuz people are gonna, well, what is that, what am I supposed to do with it? So.
And the video.
There's a video as well, uh, through a Montgomery Municipal Cable, um.
Re-vide.
And uh, the picture of the totter is actually on the direct mail flyer, so they'll see it. They'll know what they're gonna get, you know, they'll see what's being delivered.
Okay.
So.
Nice, it's good to see this.
Yeah.
For your patience and persistence, this has been.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions in the audience or uh, uh, Jody?
I have another question, I'm sorry to.
It's okay.
So, and we're gonna, and what about Friday delivery? Friday pickup? Is it gonna continue?
It'll continue, it'll continue for now because we're contracted for that through the end of the year. Yeah.
Okay, so, so, so basically, we're gonna be putting. Stuff out on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday.
Correct.
And we're gonna have trucks up and down our streets on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday.
You'll have to do Friday, you can just do Thursday.
But we're gonna have trucks up and down our streets on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday.
Thursday's compost.
Thursday's gonna be the pickup day.
So you have yard waste on Monday, trash and recycling on Tuesday. Uh, com- composting on Thursday and then Friday trash.
But that could be adjusted down the road.
Right, yeah, so the contract uh runs up on December thirty-first. Um, and then we will have to renew the contract beginning January first. Um, the trash collection contract allows us to opt out on the second. Um, the trash collection contract allows us to opt out on the second trash. Uh, we will need to make that decision by October. Or at, by, at least by the October meeting.
And then at that point, is it possible, if we're gonna move in that direction to consolidate everything until? I mean, I know yard waste and debris is separate, consolidate the other three into one day.
It's possible. I mean, i- it's really just working with Ecology, seeing what their staff's available for. To start this program now, Thursday was available for them. Uh, but we can adjust the dates for the next contract beginning January first, so.
I mean, it, it would be really nice if you could, you know, consolidate dates.
That will be the plan, that will be what we're working for, working towards. Thank you. When are you leaving town?
I'm leaving town, I'm not moving.
Oh, okay. Uh, Stuart, Stuart, you have your hand up.
Yes, Matt, thanks for the great news, it's fantastic to hear. For the folks that opt out of these, uh, buckets, they don't want them, because they don't plan on doing this. Is there a plan to, you know, recapture those buckets, so that we can potentially keep them in an inventory?
Don't get to opt out. Now, you don't have to put it out, but it's like the recycling container. The recycling container stays with the house.
Ah, okay, good to know. Thanks.
I'm sure somebody will use it for their child's sports equipment, I don't know. I hope not, but it stays with the house.
We worked through the issues on recycling, we'll, we'll get through.
We'll get through composting as well.
Technically, it's not composting.
Food waste pickup, sorry. I'll get there. I am at least participating in it. Yes, Joe.
So if I heard the town manager correctly, the pickups will begin the twenty-sixth of June and continue on Thursdays thereafter. For, at least for the balance of the year? And, uh, could you describe the issues that you referred to that delayed the implementation of this program?
I, the only thing I can say is, is the, it was a third-party vendor through Toter, Toter is our recycling. Vendor, they have a third party with these bins.
They were made in Canada.
They were made in Niagara Falls, Canada, and their communication is terrible. And their carrier is even worse. So, it's a wrap.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, finally on this matter, uh, I think it's important to keep in mind, uh, the, uh, the good counsel of outgoing council member. Bartram, who said that we should not be very quick to, uh, give up on Friday trash collection. And I think that's, uh, it's important, uh, wisdom that we should not lose sight of, and, uh, I think that giving up the Friday trash. Pickup is, although that has been lurking on this whole issue of the composting, uh, I think that's something we should not, should not give up on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Matt. Oh, one more, sorry.
We confirmed, uh, with our, uh, general contractor. That the, uh, first storm drain project will begin next Tuesday, the saw cutting.
This is on Hadley?
This is at, at the base of Hadley and Washington Street, and we're anticipating four to six weeks. Um, this is for the installation of the new storm drain bypass. Once they've completed that, they'll move into the second phase, which is the existing storm drain structure that is behind the rear line properties. Um, and from there, uh, we're trying to figure out, we'll either go up and start the St. Paul Storm Drain Project. Or we'll try to start the Armory Baltimore Project, we're trying to figure that out. Uh, but let's, we want to get through the, the bypass first.
Okay. Separate postcard then.
We'll close the streets.
Uh, no, streets will remain, I mean, there will be limited disruptions, uh, but the street will remain, um, open. There'll be some plates down and everything as they work their way up to Carol Place. Um, all the residents have been notified multiple times. Um, again, weather has been, uh, an impact for Jack and his team. Uh, just constant delays with other projects to get us, get us in town, so.
It sounds like it's a question, but what happens if we get one of those storms in the middle?
It won't impact it, because the existing storm drain is still online. Okay, so what they do is they work from the bottom up, they don't work from the top. They work from the bottom up. Yeah, so they'll actually start at the base of Washington and work the way up. So it's just, it's, uh, as we told the residents on Hadley Place, uh, it's, it's not gonna be a very, very nice scene for about a month. Uh, but once it's complete, uh, most of the water issues will be taken care of.
And will we be placing temporary no parking signs?
I, probably, uh, you may have noticed there's a bunch of traffic barrels in that general area. Uh, more than they probably need, they're gonna start moving them around. Um, and then if there's any reason where you can't park, or if there's a limited closure, there'll be some signage up. Typically, they try to post that about forty-eight hours in advance, so.
Yeah, my only thought is, as we go into the summer, where people may spend more time at the beach or on vacation. And if we've got a car right in the middle of just more than forty, where possible. I know they are aware of the project, but sometimes not remembering that when they, you know, if I were to park in the street, whoops, that might be exactly where they need to be.
I have another question, unless somebody has a question on this topic, because I'm gonna go back a little bit. Um, I, I think everybody's noticed the tall grass in the county, um, right, you know, right away in the park. Uh, along, is it in Parkway, in the same in Warner Circle? So, has anybody been in touch with parks and planning, what's going on?
Yeah, we are in constant communication, uh, with the Parks Division, their manager and the service requests. And as the mayor mentioned, it's staffing and money. And, um.
They don't have staffing or money to melt.
We were told that they're short on staff, most of it's seasonal, they haven't brought it all on. And then any other time we talk to them, it's usually, um, a monetary issue with them. So.
It's like they're stretching it to two to three weeks between them.
We've had that conversation.
What was that?
Can we just clean it, like, we do the work and we figure out.
We, we'd like to talk to the, you know, possible new county executive. To see if we can't enter some sort of MOU to maintain, um, these areas. Uh, because of this. Uh, I mean, it puts more on our own public works, but, um, I think they could take care of them pretty quickly. Uh, along the creek. And, uh, particularly Warner.
Warner Circle. Is it thought that with that MOU might come some of the, like, you know, shared use dollars? That could help with additional staff, you know.
Sure, it, it would. We can ask. But I think, especially for Warner, if we want to utilize the park more, because right now, every time we want to use it, we have to pay to use it. So it could be that we would not have to, you know, do pull permits. For the use. So, um, I think, and it'll, it'll be interesting, because by next year. Or twenty-twenty, I mean, I'm hoping we maybe could do this earlier, but, um, a new. County Executive won't actually start until twenty-seven. So, um, could we do something sooner would be helpful. But there's quite a few county council members who are running for that position, and see if we could get them to support. Uh, allowing, um. Such, uh, an MOU with a municipality through parks, not for necessarily for ownership, but for. You know, maintenance. Particularly grass, so. We'll see how that goes.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at PHP, which would be council members Fritzen, Finney Gonzalez and Jawando. So.
And Jawando's, he's running.
He is currently running. But, you know, just if they're on the same committee assignment next. In the coming year that we're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, well, we can bring that up with, uh, our county councilperson Kate Stewart, too, to see if that's something that they think they would support. But in the meantime, staff does call them.
They know us.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'd like to get through, uh, the ordinances fairly quickly if we're ready, and then I know. People are waiting for public appearances, but we do want to have cake, so just get this along. And I would like, uh, especially number one, for, um, if you want to bring it up and then let Darren. Uh, speak to it.
Sure, council, I, this evening we are introducing ordinance number O dash zero four dash twenty twenty-five. Which is an ordinance of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington, amending chapter seven. Public health, safety and conduct, article two, noise, section seven dash two, two zero one, noise control. To exempt the town from application of section thirty-one B dash nine of the Montgomery County Code. Uh, this was at the, um, recommendation, not only council member Bartram. But some feedback we received from our Public Works Department with regards to restrictions on our gas, uh, powered leaf blowers. Uh, and if council member Bartram would like to add anything to that. Um, we will need to make a motion this evening to set the public hearing for Tuesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven o'clock PM. I, I would just say that I, I, I started looking into this back when they considered the, the prohibition. Um, our crew works really hard throughout the entire fall to clean leaves from our many parks. And then we put our leaves on the curb. And it often rains on them and weighs them down for two weeks until the, the crew can make it through town, pick them up. I mean, it, it's better with the roving basis, but it's still, it's a lot of work, and once those leaves get wet. Or once, you know, i- i- it's, it's a lot of work. Right now, they have this really nice choreographed collection where. You have the, the big truck sucking the leaves and a, a couple of people with blowers. And from what I've heard, the batteries just aren't gonna last, and the backpacks are gonna be as heavy as, heavier than the leaf blowers. I talked with a couple of local municipalities, I know that, uh, I believe it's the Ch- Choverchase Village. They don't collect the leaves directly, they hire a contractor. They switch to a, a contract blowing the leaves to completely hand collecting leaves with rakes. And their costs doubled. So, uh, I'm, as a, as a parting gift to our staff. I'm, I'm suggesting that we, we pull the municipal employees out of the, the restriction and let them continue to use the equipment that they have.
Any, so many questions?
No, but I, I'll add, I stopped, I've, I've mentioned this before, but I've stopped and talked to a couple of Montgomery County's. Um, maintenance workers when they were at Kensington Cabin Park. Just about their experience, because they were using battery-powered leaf blowers, and, you know, these are people whose job it is to do this day in and day out. And they, what I didn't, took away from it was they, it takes them twice as long. Do simple tasks, to the point of things are wet, they're not, you know, they lose power over the battery life. Um, so it starts fine, but by the tail end of the battery, uh, they now have to keep a trailer with batteries with them. But the biggest complaint that resonated with me was, to Darren's point, the weight of the backpack. They said it adds upwards of forty pounds for each of these batteries, and sometimes these packs have two batteries. And so their point was, th- they, each of them complain of, of constant backpacking. And so when we talked about the fact that this was being brought about because of, uh, noise and, and audible hearing. They were all confused, because they're like, we, we have ear protection. But now there's nothing to protect our backs, and when I think about our crew in the town, you know, what they do, I think we provide them. Ear protection for the, the audibles, but, you know. I, I'm in support of this, because of talking to countiespeople about the impact that they're having physically from the battery packs.
I'm, I'm in support of this, um. For the reasons you've stated, for, to have it applied to our town employees or contractors under our authority. Because of just the volume and the scale of what they're doing is very different than a small yard that residents do, but. I wondered, um, with the language operated by or under the authority of the town, if we needed to. Be, um, more specific to indicate we really do mean under the authority, not our jurisdictional authority. But agents and employees acting under our authority.
Because we don't want it to apply to.
The assumption is, we are.
Anybody within the town.
Apply to town employees and town.
Contracted.
That was just a thought I had, um, for down the road, I don't know if anybody else.
But Sue Ellen, uh, you wrote the, uh, ordinance, do you, you think it implies other? Does it give the impression that anybody who's working on, say, our private yards, that they can use gas-powered blowers?
Jurisdictional authority versus.
Yeah, I'm mute, but, um, I saw you say no.
My apologies, I had to switch over to my iPad, my computer. Went south for, I don't know what reason.
Lack of batteries?
No, it was something else, I don't know. It was just not receiving, it kept kicking off of, uh, the internet. So, um, the question is, if, if this is only applicable to town-operated equipment. No one else will be able to use, uh, the, uh, gas-powered. Leaf blowers, this is just for the heavy work that the town crew has to do.
And obviously, we're gonna introduce it and have a public hearing.
Right, more discussion around it. Um, all right, we'll see what feedback we get, I, I do think maybe we want to clarify it a little bit, but we'll see.
Anybody in the audience?
Just, just two quick questions, um, so. We, I know that you said when we consulted with you, Sue Ellen, that this, this is only pulling us out of this part of the noise. Uh, code for the, for the county, so the rest of it, just to confirm the rest would still apply. And is the county aware that we're doing this? Did they have any, did they have any feedback as we went about it? Do we need to, would it be helpful to have consulted with them at all?
You don't require their approval to do this. Um, their law does not apply within your town unless you adopt it. Uh, the only thing I could say, the, the county, the, the county has the authority to enforce the noise ordinance. Within your boundaries, and, um. I don't know that there'd be any problem with them continuing to enforce the remainder of it.
Right, and it, it goes into fourth July first, is that right? That when it comes into effect? Yeah, and, and since we are part of the noise code, right? Then everything else applies still, for the other noise issues and, you know, concerts and things like that. And there's no, there's no, because we don't foresee their need for leaf blowers with, for the town until the fall. Having that period where we're not actually out of it yet. Until it gets approved in like August would be, or Ju-, or September, actually, I think is when we'd approve it.
I don't think, they only have what, one blower with battery? Battery operated?
Yeah, we have one.
So we'll be under, we'll be under the, the code until the first, for the first couple of months.
We'll be violating the county.
Oh, he did not just say that on record.
If we used it.
If we use our, yeah, but I don't think we will, right?
Please, collection is not usually until late October.
That's it.
Okay. Anybody in the audience have a question? Go ahead, Leslie.
She's gonna have to say this again at the public hearing.
So you've referenced that you, this is to opt out of Montgomery County's noise ordinance of seventy DVA. But you'll still comply with the state, does anyone know what that level is? I didn't seem to. Is that correct? Is that how I read it? It, the counties is lower than the states, and so you'll still be under the guidance of the states, but I just didn't know what the states was.
Yeah, and I don't remember, Sue Ellen, I did talk about it, unless Sue Ellen remembers specifically. Okay.
Generally speaking, the state exempts leaf blowers doing maintenance. Uh, during daylight hours. From restrictions. And that is the law that applies across the state, unless the local jurisdiction adopts something more restrictive.
Okay, so no sound restriction at all.
Correct.
And we would opt out of any sound restriction.
Just regarding the blowers for town staff.
Blowers for the town.
Yes.
Okay, so we're not really going with the state, we just are, okay, all right, all right, that's fine.
Okay. Uh, Joe?
Yes, thank you, uh, was the text of this ordinance included?
Yes, thank you, uh was the text of this ordinance included with the materials that were posted? With the agenda online, I couldn't find it, that's the reason I'm asking, and maybe I'm not looking in the right place, but uh.
It was not, we we received at the ordinance after the agenda was sent out, uh the ordinance will be posted to the town website, it will also. A uh. Direct mail flyer will be sent to every resident per our policy on ordinances, which will have a link to the website. Um, once it's posted for public hearing in July. Our policy is to leave it open an extra month, so there'll be plenty of time to evaluate it and respond.
Okay.
The reason I was asking, one of the reasons I was asking is that um. Uh some of the council members were quoting from the ordinance and and uh so apparently they have it, but the. But it hasn't been posted online, you say.
Yes, yeah, it is printed for us.
Yes. It will be online tomorrow.
And just for the record, this is supposed to be in the introduction only.
Yeah, introduction, it's not.
We weren't supposed to have conversations, so.
All right, I would just want to get answers from the. Questions from them.
But uh requesting a motion to set the public hearing for uh Tuesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty five at seven o'clock P M.
Okay. Is there a? Need a motion?
Do we, do we need a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Yeah, and set it, yeah.
I'll make an ord- a a motion to introduce ordinance number O dash zero four dash twenty twenty five. And to set a public hearing for July fifteenth at seven P M, correct.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Okay.
Coming to the July meeting dinner.
I know, he is.
Before, Council, before this evening is resolution number R dash eleven dash twenty twenty five. A resolution of the mayor and town council authorizing the town manager to establish an always stop at the intersection of Howard Avenue and Armory Avenue. Um, the signage has already been installed under under staff's authority, uh however, we need a traffic order to keep it up. Um, this is at the recommendation of our traffic engineer following the installation of the new uh sidewalk between Connecticut Avenue and Armory Avenue on the north side. Uh and having a defined crosswalk at the intersection, so.
Any questions? Any questions in the audience? Can I have a motion? I move that we adopt resolution number R dash eleven dash twenty twenty five to establish an always stop. At the intersection of Howard Avenue and Armory Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, number three.
Thank you, Council, uh before you this evening is resolution number R dash twelve dash twenty twenty five, a resolution of the mayor and town council authorizing the town manager. To establish four hour parking in certain areas along thirty seven hundred block of Dupont Avenue. Between Concord Street and the Dupont Avenue barricade, uh this was at the request of the Jubilee Association who had acquired the property. Um at that location. Um a traffic engineer did an evaluation, he determined that three public parking spaces uh would be possible. Uh we have already established signs there for the three spaces, uh the traffic order is to formally establish this. Request.
Okay, any questions? Any questions from the audience?
Yeah, this is not a residential area, this is a commercial area between the existing Dupont barricade and Concord Street.
Yeah, capital one and the new.
Correct, and again, we were only able to uh establish three parking spaces.
These, Matt, are these to be? Like street parallel spaces?
Correct, yeah, and they're limited to four hours, so.
And I assume it's this area.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I guess my only question was, was there any thought given to forty five degree angled spaces, given that there's no traffic headed westward or that doesn't?
I'm finding three spaces here.
Yeah.
There, yeah, there's a lot of curb cuts, the barricade basically creates a no outlet zone.
Yeah.
Uh it it was kind of difficult.
A barricade right here.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
Come.
Yep.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, the signs have already been posted, um we just need a traffic order to.
Keep them up.
Correct.
Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number R dash twelve dash twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council, uh before you receive is resolution number R dash thirteen dash twenty twenty five. A resolution of the mayor and town council declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town of Kensington to honor and remember all victims. And survivors of gun violence and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence.
Any questions? Questions from the audience? Is there a motion?
I'll move to adopt resolution. R dash thirteen dash twenty twenty five. Establishing the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Orange that day.
Yes.
We were wearing it last night.
We were. Well, some were, some were more orange than others, but. But Friday, let's, let's get a little.
Thank you, Council. Uh before you is the last resolution for this evening is uh R dash fourteen dash twenty twenty five. A resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorizing a contract agreement with Lydia Lawless of Crayman and Graham. P A for legal services to represent the town in the bakery, confectionery, tobacco workers and grain millers international union, that's B C T G M. First, the town of Kensington case number C dash fifteen dash C V dash twenty five dash zero zero one seven four three. Uh we mentioned this earlier this evening, um staff has the authority to sign a um. A uh a contract for up to thirty thousand dollars, which we did. However, we need council approval to uh meet the fifty thousand dollar requirement uh for this. Uh case, we will be reimbursed by Legit, who is local government insurance trust. For any bills, we will pay and then being reimbursed for this. So um the contract with uh Ms. Lawless was attached to this resolution.
Okay, any questions from the council? No, uh Joe, you have a question?
I do, thank you, Mayor, I'm just very curious to know how the law firm was engaged, was there anything? Even remotely akin to a bid process, or was there prior engagement with the town that that uh? Recommended this firm to um to us, I'm just curious how you uh you found them.
Yeah, our town attorney uh recommended them, uh Sue Ellen Ferguson, uh we um discussed it at a work session last month. And the council uh gave count uh the town staff authority to move forward with a contract agreement.
I believe the lawyer is very familiar with the town as well.
Correct, um she's familiar with the town, the county uh as well, um. And um. Yeah.
Were there other law firms considered?
No, we did not, we did not.
And um is this fifty thousand dollar cap? Is that the final sum that you anticipate paying the law firm for this, for these services?
Uh no, so what we can do is we can spend up to fifty thousand dollars. Um with this contract, and then if required, if that amount goes above that, we'll have to bring back a new resolution. Uh with a ratified contract to the council.
And we will be reimbursed by our insurance company for these expenses.
For up to fifty.
Up to fifty thousand.
Yeah, I understand that, um did did the uh, did the lawyer give you any indication that? That this might be more costly than fifty thousand dollars? As litigation can be, you know.
If I may, Mayor, yes, everyone's aware of the fact that litigation is not controlled by the parties necessarily or one party. And that it could be more than that, but this is the limit that's been set at the moment. And so it would come back to council before anything else happened.
Okay, my question was, uh did the lawyer give us any indication that the? Litigation may cost us more than fifty thousand dollars?
The answer I just gave is that, yes.
Thank you, Mayor Furman.
Thank you.
Okay, uh could we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R dash fourteen dash twenty twenty five.
There's a second?
I second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Right, last item on the agenda is public appearances, the opportunity to. Uh bring up anything that's not already on the agenda.
If the scouts have any questions, you are welcome to ask.
Can't get a bad without a question.
Yeah, right.
Your last chance to ask Darren a question.
No questions? All right, uh Joe?
Oh, yeah, what troop? Just for the record, what troop number? Four thirty nine?
Four thirty nine, they're over at St. Paul's.
Then you were. G T A? Oh, God, yeah, got it.
And you guys meet where? Chubby Chase. Uh Joe?
Thank you.
I I'm happy to defer, Mayor, to the uh Girl Scouts right now.
Well, they they are, they're good, they don't have any other questions right now.
Okay.
They're waiting for cake.
I guess you all are, but I'm curious to understand why the latest issue of the Around Town Newsletter. Offered only one side of the debate about the sale of Joseph's Park. In in other words, only the positions supporting the sale were presented in the newsletter, which goes to all townspeople. And and this is really puzzling, and even more than puzzling, it's 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 rather undemocratic. And I'm referring to the um principally to the mayor's uh five hundred and seventy five word write-up. Uh that was on the front page of the Around Town Newsletter, and then it continued on to the next page. And it just seems to me that the norms of fairness, of open discourse, informed debate. Really necessitates that contrary views be presented as well. And to to ignore contrary views, to to ignore viewpoint diversity. It seems incongruous and inconsistent with a well-functioning local democracy. Now, this referendum, as you know, was an upshot of an admirable grassroots effort. A petition drive in which supporters of the sale and opponents of the sale both signed and gave their signatures. And for the views of only one side to be presented in the only publication that reaches all the town residents, just seems. Unfair and astonishing to me, and it's it's not as if. Other views were unavailable for prospective publication, I mean, two of the four council members presented back in March. Thorough, even eloquent arguments opposing the sale of the park. And I think it would have only taken a small effort to transcribe excerpts of their arguments, for example. And present them in the town journal at a length comparable to to the mayor's. And back in May last month at the candidates' meet and greet, we heard a few townspeople say that they had not seen adequate discussion. About the proposed sale of the park. And the mayor's write-up in the town journal addressed only one side of that perceived shortfall. There are views, other views, the opponents of the sale, those views were ignored in the publication that reaches all residents of the town, so. I'm very curious to know why, how this decision was made just to pre- present one side of the argument.
The journal goes out, the uh the jour- the upcoming journal goes to every council member and all groups who provide content. With a due date. Everybody has an opportunity to provide an article. I'm one of those. And if they choose not to. I can't, that's that's their decision. The council was sent a copy through mayor dot council when I sent it to Matt. Before it went to the printer. And if somebody had said I want to write something, I would have made room for them.
So is that only council members who can do that, or were um other townspeople eligible to to submit? Opposing views? It seems like it uh wouldn't have been difficult to solicit. Counterarguments to the sale, not that it would have made a difference necessarily in the vote of yesterday. But I think fairness, the norms of fairness and and viewpoint diversity would have would have required soliciting a view. From someone else, from an opponent.
Joe, I know you also would like us to go out and find candidates to run against us, our own, you know, ourselves too. And so I think sometimes your expectations are a little bit.
Well, well, let's just keep it to the, to this latest issue of the town journal, of the of the Round Town Journal and and not bring in. Extraneous issues that may or may not be germane, but I I I'm curious to know why one side of this argument was presented.
Joe, I I have an issue with one of the things that you said, which was at the meet and greet, uh which was for myself and Stuart. Uh being reelected. And yes, people brought up that they felt that in, there wasn't adequate information about this issue. But when we went through the number of journal articles that had been written. The number of public meetings with minutes that had been posted. The number of times that this issue had been. Posted on to a neighborhood lister, which is not the official town record, and I know that because I posted most of them. Um, the information was there, and so the issue I take with your comment is that you're saying. Had we included that information in here, would have more informed residents. These are the same residents that were not informed by the same means that we had been sending out this information, I can't make people read. The information that we're putting out.
That may be true, but I think that.
Part is, this isn't a newspaper. It's a newsletter.
It's the publication that reaches all townspeople.
But it's not a newspaper, it's not an op ed where it's necessarily looking for. Opinions on every side of the issue, it is, I'm looking at our town website, which explains what the newsletter is. It is the minutes of our meetings, its important agenda items for upcoming town council meetings, town announcements and upcoming events, and to the mayor's point. Opposing views could have asked to include, and they didn't.
Were those opposing views solicited?
But that's the point, I do, I do think for the record, it's important to note. That we were not informed it was going to be this piece by you, Mayor. Um. So there was really no motivation for us to provide. An opposing view. Now, had we been offered that, I don't, I may have taken you up on it, I don't know if Ann would have. I would have preferred if there were no opinions put, because we already made our case during the previous town council meeting. So I would have allowed for the facts to be laid out. Um and this not to be an opinion, but since this has been discussed and you made the point, I think it's important to note that.
Yeah, thank you, I, as I say, I think the the norms of fairness, open discourse and informed debate. Would have necessitated that contrary views be presented if the. Pro-sale view was was so prominently presented. And uh this may or may not be, you know, a newspaper or whatever, but it's it's uh. It's the only publication that reaches town residents on a regular basis. And uh there has been a lot of debate about that, I'm I'm. Well aware of that, but I just think that the prominence given this. Opinion piece in the latest issue of the Round Town Journal was was just unfair, very unfair. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that is everything, you set the date. We're just looking for a motion to adjourn.
No.
Now.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Let me pick.
Yay, Darren.
Thank you.